There's nothing different in those things, I correct you?
I'm sorry, what?
The Carol Robinson contract is listed in both of those places.
Well, I added the consent and then not realizing that it was somewhere else.
Okay, but we, but they can, I think we can vote on that if it's in general and then we don't have to do it again.
Yeah, that's fine, either one. And her, the original contracts there, they're right nearby you, it's fine.
Yeah. And then the inter-local government agreement there with Alphatah County, that has to do with our first bond that we passed up with for the complex, and that's a yearly agreement, so that's a yearly thing that gets voted on.
Board, have any questions on A three G, who's July activity fundraisers, I guess it's just the time of year?
It is, and some of those things will come up. I do have one on here, and we can, we can hold off on this one. The seventh grade class for band cloth. Sometimes that interferes with our sophomores T-shirt sales when we do those things. I've asked the seventh graders to hold off on selling and putting their catalog out until the sophomores have their T-shirt sales established. It's listed, they've got the, they've got the form filled out, but I have talked to those sponsors about holding off on that sale until sometime later, or we can, they may not, they may not. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? So I'll make a motion to approve A three G excluding the seventh grade class band cloth. Amber's made a mo, or I've made a motion, Amber's second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyde?
Yes.
Number three, discussion and vote on the continued protocols for the student health at CPS?
I know this was obviously a hot topic at the last meeting, but I want to start by saying how impressed that I've been with our students handling everything that we've asked them to do. We have not had any issues discipline-wise with, with anything, out of anybody. They've been great. They've done everything that we've asked them to do. E- even going into wiping down desks and things like that at the end of the hour, going in and out. I've had several teachers tell me that they've got students that will volunteer to help just do those things. It's nothing where anybody's putting themselves at any more risk. They're just willing to step up and do those things. You know, we have had one positive case in the junior high, and we had to send home fourteen members of the eighth grade, including that individual. There was two seventh graders that had to go home because of that, six ninth graders and two tenth graders. Students outside of that eighth grade class, most of them were, that was due to contact outside of school. And everybody is coming back tomorrow, so everybody will be back in class tomorrow. The ones that, that did need to test to follow up, that had been in close contact, those all came back negative. You know, so there was twenty-four students there that actually were affected by that one positive case that we did have, and that was quite, quite a learning experience to have to go through that. But twenty-four kids that they'd missed four days of school, and we'll talk about our enrollment numbers later, but that means that there was over a hundred and fifty that were still in school that we were able to keep here. And so there's, there's no sign of anything at this point that, you know, there's, there's any spread or anything like that going on in school. So, you know, saying all those things, I feel like the things that we are doing are working. They're doing what the intent is there. I think that maybe there was a, maybe a misunderstanding that the masks were going to be made mandatory all day long for the students. That's, that's not what we're doing. We're trying to social distance first and then wear a mask when we can. And right now, what that looks like is that's in the class. Most of our classrooms are spread out, so they don't have to wear them there. There may be one or two classes that students have to because we just couldn't get the numbers or the spacing down to meet those other guidelines. In the hallways between classes, we ask them to wear them. And then at lunch, in the lunch line, until they're seated with their food, they wear them. And then when they get done eating, if they go out front, if they go outside, I've told them several different times, you guys will go out and spread out six feet apart, take them off, we're outside, don't have to worry. There's a lot of kids that leave them on. And like I said, it hasn't been a problem, discipline-wise, and I'll be honest, that was one thing I was concerned about, is what are we going to do if we get some, get some kids to kind of fight back, but they've been great. You know, so kind of saying all those things, there's, there's outside influences that we can't control. The, the other case where we had to send, I think, five kids home and quarantine was just because of, you know, somebody from, from outside of the school, and wasn't in the school. And so there's other outside influences that, that we just can't control, and I think that it's our responsibility to do everything we can to control everything in the school while we're here the best we can. I talked to our student council on Friday. Kind of something that I wanted to start doing this year was have a monthly lunch with our student council and the admin, and try to get some response and just kind of give them a voice in some of the things that we're doing here. And so that was one thing that we talked about, and I asked them, you know, what do you guys feel about the masks? And of course, they said, well, none of us want to wear them. And I said, well, I, I think I would agree with that. I don't think any of us want to, but those members that spoke up, and those were usually the older, the older ones, the officers, they said even if that gives them a one percent chance of, of helping to stay in school and do their activities, they were willing to do whatever we, we asked them to do. And that was kind of the consensus there from the student council. I asked one of the sophomore students there in that group, because sophomore class is our biggest class, what it was like, you know, and she said she's really got one class that they have to wear during the class period because it's just not, they're not able to spread out social distance because of the numbers. But other than that, like I said, the kids have been, have been really good about all of it. And, you know, one, one question that came up, and I think it's worth just mentioning here is there was some confusion, I don't know if to call it confusion or not, maybe that's not the right word, but when we did have to quarantine the students that were in close contact, the question came up, why, they have masks on, do they still have to do that? The answer is yes, and that's, that's per the health department's guidelines. The mask is there to help protect, if somebody's, you know, has it, doesn't know it, both people are wearing it, then, you know, the theory there behind that is that it's going to help better protect them. But if they're within that six feet for more than fifteen minutes, regardless of if there's a mask or not, they're still going to go through the contract tracing and identify that individual as being in close contact and needing to quarantine for forty minutes. You know, so I did clarify that when I was on the phone with the health department. And that's, you know, that's what our other kind of local health people would say. It's, it's my recommendation that we keep doing what, what we're doing. I feel like with the cleaning, we bring in OB/cleaning twice a week, and they're coming in spraying and doing some of those things. We're wiping down the desk hourly. Teachers are wiping down their, their classrooms and everything. At the end of the day, when they leave, we're spraying the buses down with disinfectant spray that we have. At the locker rooms, when we've had visiting teams here and ball games, we go in and do the same thing there in those locker rooms. There's, there's a lot of things that we are doing that I, I think are very beneficial. And like I said, I, I've talked to the students and the teachers too. I think what we're doing is giving us the best opportunity to keep as many kids in school as we can, and that, that is the goal right now, is to stay in school and not go to distance learning, be here as much as we can. So it's my recommendation that, that we continue the current protocols as we are.
So based on that, the indicators, if they start to go down, or their numbers start to go down, what kind of indicators are you looking forward to back this up a little bit to reduce the amount of restriction?
There's going to be lots of things. You know, the, the color-coded map that we have is, is, and it's in the, in the plan to serve the guideline.
Right.
There are some flaws in that.
Guideline.
Yeah, and there are some flaws with that, with that map. And I don't think what we want is something that, you know, we've talked about having local control and being able to determine what is best for us. You know, where Alphatah County may go up to orange, we don't, those cases aren't here.
Right.
And so we need to be able to look and see what's going on in our school and our community. So I think it's good to look at those things and have awareness. But we really need to look specifically at what's going on with our student body and our families that are affected. And like I said, as of now, everything's gone pretty well. We've had the one positive case. Everybody that was around that individual that did test, the test came back negative. You know, so the, as far as looking at that map to make a determination on whether or not we should close down the school, I think we really need to look at what's going on in our building, in our community, rather than what's going on in the entire county. And I think it's good to know, you know, just the general idea, but as far as making those decisions, you know, it's really more about what's going on here.
Questions, concerns? Crash Grimes complains?
Like I said, I, I just, I, I don't think that I can express how proud I've been of our kids. I mean, they have been really just going above and beyond with a lot of things. I mean, I've just, I've just been very impressed with them.
Amber's made a motion to continue as we did last month, so no changes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Shane's second? Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
No.
Will Hyde?
Yes.
Number four, consideration and action on the estimate of needs for school year twenty twenty-one.
That has not been received from auditor yet, unless you got it today.
I don't have anything though.
Okay. There'll be no action on number four? And we can just push that back ten seconds?
Yes.
Number five, consideration and action on the employment of Stephen L. Smith Corp. As a financial consultant to the Cherokee Public School for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
That would be our, kind of our consultant there, our boss. Visiting with Donna, she spoke fairly highly of them and what they do. The recommendation there would be to continue that, that employment with them.
That's kind of an annual thing we do. I'll make a motion to approve the Stephen L. Smith Corp. as our financial consultants. Looking for a second.
A second.
Who's got it?
Desiree.
Desiree's second. Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyde?
Yes.
Number six, proposed executive session to discuss the employment of certified personnel so that the board may return to open session to discuss the evaluation of employment, including salary and contract. Donna Anderson as the superintendent to the board can return to open session twenty-five oh S three oh seven B one. Amber's made a motion to convene on second.
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyde?
Yes.
Seven sixteen. I'll move into boards return to open session.
Motion to return.
Amber's made a motion on second.
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyde?
Yes.
Time?
Nine forty-three. Statement of the minutes?
During executive session, we discussed the employment of certified personnel so that we could return to open session to discuss the evaluation of employment, including salary and contract of Donna Anderson as the superintendent.
Number ten, vote to approve salary and contract change to reflect Donna Anderson as superintendent of Cherokee Public Schools as well as Terrell Public Schools?
Our recommendation is to approve Donna Anderson as superintendent for both Cherokee Public Schools and Carroll Public School until such time as an interim superintendent can be appointed with a contract change of paying insurance and retirement for Donna Anderson until an interim superintendent is approved.
All second. Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyde?
Yes.
Number eleven, in compliance with section one 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 of the E S S A, Cherokee Public Schools go back to select the SAT as the C C R A assessment for our grade eleven students during the O S T P testing window and provide community stakeholders with an opportunity to provide meaningful input regarding our district's intent to request permission to administer the SAT alue of the statewide assessment.
Just talking with the board heads and waiting out options. They felt that the SAT provided some better opportunities and just a little bit better constructed test for our students to take. The A C T is still an option, but the SAT then would, would be the main test that the, that the juniors would take during that testing window.
I guess, why would we be changing that now? Is it something that?
Yeah, Jeremy, can you answer that a little bit better, because I know you're in those conversations?
Yeah. Let's all just hand this out, because this kind of doesn't speak to anything that, that I'll say, but it just kind of lets you know the differences between the two. Last, correct me. What did you mean? Last spring?
Last spring.
Mrs. Jordan, myself, Mrs. Baldwin, Mr. Lyon, Mrs. Cudmore.
Mrs. Anderson.
Mrs. Anderson met to discuss this. And he came to the conclusion that this was the best, the best way to serve our students. But I don't, as far as the timeline of why it's being brought up now, I'm not sure of that. Mrs. Jordan, she deals with the testing more than I, so I'll defer a little bit to her. But that's kind of the background of where we're at.
This is truly the state's test that they've chosen, and it's just the two parts, the English and the math, rather than the A C T that had the additional science. So we felt like for everyone, it would be easier for them to just, because they're going to additionally have to take a science and a history based on the state's requirements on top of that. And so that way, our college-bound kids twice a year, we're still going to offer an A C T too. But the SAT is going to be the blanket junior test, and that is the state-recommended test. We had opted out last year to do the A C T, but we've selected to do this for a couple of different reasons, but one of them primarily was to give everybody an opportunity to take an SAT, and then we also have those offerings for our college-bound kids to take the A C T test too. And our group that basically teaches the upper-level science, math, and English, and, well, George, we didn't have him there that day, but that teaches the upper-level classes. All were in agreement that this would be a better situation. It would limit who we have take our A C T, so it's going to only be college-bound and not throwing everyone in there, which I think will reflect better what our true A C T average is, and that was one of our considerations. The SAT, of course, yes, you can get general averages as well, but the things that they put in the newspapers typically are the A C T, so that may have a change in a couple of years, that we'll see.
And the, well, the cost.
The cost.
For our.
So much lower.
For us. For to do the A C T prep stuff and all of the A C T programs that we had, plus just the A C T itself, was very expensive, and we can limit the amount of classroom test prep and testing because we were giving kids a test every nine weeks, plus doing, like, every couple of weeks we would have to do another check for the A C T stuff. With the SAT, we can do one test per year, so that's a savings right there. And the actual cost of the SAT is about twenty dollars less per student than the A C T. So we thought all of those things combined, that all the benefits that they would give as far as, like, because the A C T score is what's reflected on the, the school report card, and the surrounding areas don't offer the A C T to all of their students, they only offer it to the college-bound students. So that's why their scores comparatively were a little higher than ours. But in true reflectiveness, our scores should have been about the same if we looked at the college-bound kids. So between that, the cost savings, and just the fact that we don't have to administer classroom tests all the time, and we can focus more on actual teaching, we thought that those things would make it better. So we opted to do a three-year plan with the SAT just to see how that would go, yeah.
Just looking at the two, it seems to, I don't know if there's, is there just a lack of English and science on the SAT? Or a lot less? Questions on?
The SAT, well, the P S A T that we'll do as the review will have four sections, and I'm not going to be able to speak to the SAT without looking for sure, but the P S A T has two sections for the E L A, kind of a reading and writing, if you will, grammar's embedded within it, and then there's two math sections. So it's a little bit, a little bit different than A C T.
More time. The SAT, you have more time for the English section, it's fewer questions and more time versus the A C T, which has more questions, and it's seventy-five questions in.
Less time.
Yeah, in less time. So that, and the math section, the way that it was broken up, we felt that it would be a little bit better for students to take because it's not sixty questions in a short amount of time. There's those two sections.
It's split up a little bit.
And, and the, but it's not the SAT test of old, which is like, you know, light bulb is to stop science. It's not like that. It's, they've changed it, and it's actually much similar to the A C T.
It is.
So we thought with the time requirements and the way that the, that it was written now, it would be better for our students in that sense, if that makes sense.
Any other questions, comments? I'll make a motion to select the SAT as a C C R A assessment for our grade eleven.
One second.
Desiree's second. Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Will Hyde?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number twelve, discussion and approval of the contract with Cole Robertson for elementary counseling service.
That's what was on the, 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 yeah, earlier.
Oh.
We've done that.
Yeah, okay. We didn't table that last one. No action, so there'll be no action on twelve?
Correct.
Sorry.
Yep. Number thirteen, principals reports?
We survived day one of virtual learning today, so they went pretty well, as far as we can tell. We had some phone calls, emails to teachers, but nothing negative, just cries for help. We all learned a little bit, and we, we all met this afternoon, all the teachers, talked about the good things and the bad things and how they can improve, so it's kind of good for the teachers to all visit with each other and learn from each other. So hopefully next month will be even better. And I've had some kids come and I've had some kids go, but my, my enrollment right now is two hundred and thirty-two. Biggest class this week.
When were you at the enrollment?
I think I was like at two thirty. But I've had some left, because of the epic, and then I've had some of them. He used to be much ways to go.
Last time we met, I told you we were going to do some, put some things together to try to package, to put less things on the community so they don't get hit up as much. And our fundraising for athletic program, we combined, I mentioned Game Time Squirtle and our gym banners. We put that in a package, said you can have it gold, silver, bronze, depending on how much you want to give. We were able to, through the great giving of the community, we were able to raise seventeen thousand dollars through that. And that's going to pay for Game Time Squirtle banners and allow the athletics programs to really flourish there. We really had a lot of success. People are getting advertisement on Game Time and Squirtle, so they're very happy about that. So that's, I think that was a big success for us. We hosted a cross-country meet Saturday, we had four hundred and seventy-six runners. Took a lot of people to make that run. So I'll just say there was a lot of elber, I mentioned the names. High school football's two and O, we've won it over Leverne Pioneer. We have, we did not play the Sharon Mutual game, and then we will play Shattuck, at Shattuck this Friday. And then high school softball has been playing when they can because of different, whether it's rain or schools not wanting to play, they haven't played as many games as they would hope, but they're trying to get back on track. And then kind of the same thing with fifth and eighth grade football. They've lost, you know, they haven't played every game because of different situations, but they do have a game here tomorrow with Bedford, fifth through eighth. And they will be playing the regional at Moreland for softball, and that will be determined time and date. That's all I have on athletics.
Our enrollment numbers here, six through eight, like Bruce said, we've, we've had some come and some go. But right now, six through eight, we have eighty-three students enrolled, and at high school, nine through twelve, we have a hundred and four students enrolled. So right now, we have our needs in this, in this building. Distance learning day was also today. Kids have been practicing different things in their classes, kind of just in preparation. But like Bruce said, it's a, it's a work in progress, and there's going to need to be things that are adjusted as we go. I think today, you know, it was just things that you can't always prepare for. I think there was some internet issues with a lot of parents, and that's not a fault of theirs, that's not a fault of the schools. So I think just parents and teachers and everybody just working together is what's going to get us through those things. But it sounded like it went well. We met with some of the teachers today and talked about some different issues that, that we've seen come up. So just constantly trying to make that as good as we can, you know, a good product that's out there for everybody. Some positive things here. Madison Wheeler will be the twenty, twenty-one North One District President, and there's only twenty of those in the state, and Bridget Will Hyde will be the twenty, twenty-one North One District Vice President of Community Service, and that's part of the. And that's part of the S C L A programs that we have here. Mrs. Gush just does an outstanding job every year. So our students are out there on those state levels, again, representing us well. Some notes, other things here, we've got twelve students attending Northwest Tech this year for the fall semester. We have twenty-two students who are taking concurrent courses through Northwestern. So that is, that is a lot. They're taking advantage of some of the opportunities that they've provided over there, some of the changes in their policies. So, I mean, twenty-two students taking some of those concurrent courses, that's, that's the most we've ever had by far. Mrs. Jordan is going out to classes to discuss some coping strategies for stress relief. And soon we'll be working with students to learn more about themselves through a learning style quiz. And students will be encouraged to learn how to study with methods that fit their style. She's constantly, constantly looking for better, better opportunities and more things that our kids can benefit from. She's also working with the seniors to prepare for post, excuse me, post-secondary choices. And will host the face-to-face meetings and, and some virtual ones as well. Senior college application week will be September twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. And we'll encourage students to apply for college and post-secondary school admission. We have a blood drive for Cherokee High School that will be on September the twenty-ninth from eleven A M. to three P M. that's sponsored by the student council. Our A C T district testing will be on October the sixth. And we have thirty-seven junior and senior students signed up to take that test. That test will cost each student thirty-nine dollars this year. October seventh will be a financial planning and F A S P A meeting for all seniors and their families. And a Northwestern representative will be here to help families sign up for F A S P A for any student who plans to continue their education after high school. We still have counseling available to any of our students who need group counseling or otherwise. And parents can contact Mrs. Jordan if they need help getting signed up for those things. All in all, we've had some tough things that we've had to go through to start the year. And like I've said earlier, our students have handled things really well. Our, our staff, teachers have handled things really well. We've had to deal with a lot during this first month. And like I said, the distance learning and just the other things, we've got to just kind of be constantly adjusting and being ready to change as we need to. But everybody's done a fantastic job at this point.
Superintendent, is the superintendent's?
Yes.
Okay. Number fifteen, any new business? New business? Hammer's made a motion to adjourn. Second?
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hyde?
Yes.
I.
Tim?